And why we make the decisions that we made. So, the vision of the Cameron R. One School District is to offer exceptional educational experience. And the mission is to educate and empower our students to reach their full potential. And then, we move right into Dragon Awards. So, we have two people that we get to celebrate tonight that have worked diligently, not only while, while teaching or overseeing, really administering buildings, they pursued their doctorate and received their doctorate. So, Dr. Angie Ormsby. Angie received this Dragon Excellence Award for her contributing to the vision of excellence in this Cameron R. One School District by obtaining your doctorate in Educational Leadership, K-12, from William Woods University. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take them both. And next, we have Dr. Derek Lanigan. Derek, for continuing, contributing to the vision of excellence in the Cameron R. One School District by obtaining your doctorate in Educational Leadership, K-12, from William Woods University. Now, we're going to consider the poster agenda. So, you've been presented the agenda. Do I have any changes or any modifications to the attendants? If not, we'll move right into the consent agenda. You've had an opportunity to review the past minutes of the financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Seconded by Ms. Lockridge. Seconded by Ms. Beal Clark. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. We want to let the community know that our board member, Mr. Vermeer, has been caught up with work duties this evening, so he's not here currently, but he may slip in later, we don't know. We'll just watch for him. Next item is administrative reports. We're going to skip on down to the elementary school and have Dr. Ormsby go first this evening.
Good evening. I wanted to comment on the reports that I submitted and Dr. Utech submitted about the progress that we've been able to make at Parkview Elementary this year. I'm super excited about the growth that we've seen and the achievement of our students in not just kindergarten through second grade, but also preschool. The reading success plans were something new this year that we created for all students who had certain deficits in phonemic awareness in kindergarten and first grade, and then we had phonemic awareness and phonics and comprehension in second grade. So, we started off the year with several kids that had identified deficiencies and we're ending the year with a plethora of students coming off of their plan because of the growth they've been able to make due to their hard work and the hard work of their teachers. In kindergarten, we had 17 students come off a reading success plan, which is a phenomenal number, leaving us with 11 remaining students. In first grade, we had eight students come off a reading success plan, and we have four that are left. This is just since we last reviewed them at middle of the year. And in second grade, we had 20 come off a reading success plan with 13 remaining. These reading success plans include students that have dyslexia, some are nonverbal. We're testing all of our students, including those with learning disabilities. So, it's been a great achievement, and I'm so proud of my staff for the training that they have undertaken and just their diligence in maintaining these plans and helping the students reach their goals. I also want to thank the parents because our reception to tutoring was wonderful this year, and parents were, every session that we would have, six-week sessions, they would bring their kids, pick them up. It was wonderful, just the ability that they had to help us out in helping their child. So, super excited about that, and I hope that you guys can see that in those data reports. Did you have any questions for me?
Definitely growth.
Yes, thank you. And seeing Dr. Utech's report that I hadn't seen before tonight, and seeing that we had, we were high achievement, high growth, was a wonderful thing to be able to see that, and that 83% of our students were at proficiency. So, it's wonderful, very proud.
Dr. Ormsby? I have a question. So, just to try to prevent too much loss of that growth during the summer, what would be some of your recommendations to parents on how to keep those skills that they've learned up?
You actually asked that, I believe, last month or the month prior. This year, we've done what we call parent choice boards, and those were centered around student activities that would address all of the areas that we are deemed responsible for, teaching students and ensuring that they're proficient on in early literacy. So, I'm asking all the teachers, and they've been doing it all year, I think we've got a few of the latest ones yet to put in the folders, but we have a Google Drive folder that I'll be pushing out to families, actually have it on my list to do tomorrow, just as a final, I guess, gift to them here. I know it's hard, we're asking you to continue to work with your child over the summer months. That went at home today, and then RSP letter that I sent out, and in the letter, it says, you know, you're going to have the ability to access this online. So, all, every single parent choice board, so every week, there was a skill set, a three-by-three grid of activities that parents could easily do at home. It wouldn't cost any extra money, they wouldn't need, you know, a massive amount of supplies, but they're just easy, simple things, everyday things you can do with your child to ensure that they either gain that skill or retain that skill. So, that'll be shared with them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me, Ms. Rucker.
Good evening. I would just kind of like to echo what Dr. Ormsby shared about our, our student growth this year at CIS, and I know you can see it on the board report, but of the 59 students that started the year with reading success plans, anywhere from phonemic awareness clear to comprehension, there's five components of reading that they had to pass. Of the 59 that started, 40 of those have come off of reading success plans, and I'm very excited about that. Letters and Reading Success Plan update went home to parents today with grade cards. CIS also met with CDMS last week to go over kind of the process we had as we transfer the, there's five that we will transfer to CDMS next year, and to talk about progress, what we've been doing with students, so that that could be a seamless entry in the CDMS and their continued growth. So, a lot of great things going on in Cameron right now. As far as state testing, we completed that May 10th with a few makeups just last week. The senior walkthrough was phenomenal, the intermediate students really like to watch them and give hugs and high-fives all they can. We have, this morning was talent show, it is on the Facebook, it was, I Facebook live'd it, so it's safe for 30 days, so anybody can enjoy the talent that we had this morning and for parents and for family members from afar can, can go back and watch anytime for the next 30 days. Facebook tells me it deletes it then, so if you're going to watch it, get on it. We have students today received tickets for attendance drawing, for prizes for their attendance, and quite the excitement in the hallway about who was, you know, put their ticket in for what prize. So, they will find that out tomorrow, who wins those prizes, and then our classroom award ceremony is also in the morning as we get ready to end our 23, 24 school year.
Any questions? Questions, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stedman.
How's everybody doing? I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. One, our attendance is still steady, 7% above where it was last year at this time, so we're pretty pleased with that. We think that maybe when our, all the numbers are in and the formula is suggested, we think we're going to be close to 90%, but we're not 100% sure, but that would be a big improvement from last year. I just had our, I know this year, I've talked several times about our intervention program, ExactPath by Abenem, it's one of the tools that we're using. I had an opportunity to meet with the representatives of that company and do a year-one evaluation, and we broke down some key data points, and a couple of things really stood out. Students had the opportunity for additional practice in a variety of places, in their, in tutoring interventions, reviews in classrooms, even downtimes, and not just downtimes in math and ELA, where they, they use that as an opportunity when kids finish work to work on it, but they did roughly 18,000 activities across the three grade levels this year in that program, and they mastered 2,100 skills. So, that was big. The Abenem people were really impressed with our year-one numbers. They've started reaching out to our teachers just to see how they've incorporated it and some of the different things that they've done. I know some of our teachers have had competitions amongst classes, which is kind of cool, they can garner, it's trophies basically that they get when they achieve so many skills. It's just been really neat to see kids get excited about that and take part in that. We had our map celebration Monday, our attitude and effort, we had the most participants we've ever had that were rewarded for their attitude and effort on their map test. I'm excited to see what our scores will say when they come back. We had a great, we had a great afternoon today. We had our StuCo volleyball tournament this afternoon, which was a lot of fun, kids enjoyed it. I think it was a nice kind of reward for them for a good school year. We've just, we've had a lot of shifts behaviorally that I think have been very positive for our class, classes, and just really thrilled with that and excited to start our planning for next year.
Were you out there on the court?
I, I was not today. I was, I did, I did, I was a judge, I was a line judge, and I, and I was a cheerleader for all, but it was intense. I was pretty impressed, like our, our teachers, we did have a bit of a ringer in Coach Gar.
Yeah.
Surprisingly, Mr. Colbert showed up and showed out, so that was good, and, but it was fun. It was fun to watch, it's neat to see all our kids cheering for each other and cheering for the teachers. They, they clearly were, they were favorites early, but as, as it went on, and we, and our teachers began to win, they weren't fan favorites anymore. So, but it was fun to watch. It was, it was fun, the kids enjoyed it, and I think it's nice for, when we can do stuff like that, you know, so.
I think it was a hit, it was a hit in our house, that was a talk TV.
Yeah. They were, the C-1 squad, the C-1 squad, I tried to encourage them by telling them to do it for JoJo, but they were, you know, they were, it was fun, it was fun to watch. They, it was, it was neat, it was a double elimination tournament, there were about 10 teams total, I think, and the kids all got into it, and it was fun. It was just, it was nice to be able to meet as a student body and as a, as a group and just have some time where it was, take a breath, enjoy each other, and cheer each other on, it was fun.
Mr. Stickel, you mentioned attendance, and of course, everybody is working on that. The trajectory and in the numbers I'm seeing is while it's not where we want it to be, it's up, right?
Yeah, it's great.
So, what we're doing is helping?
Well, we hope so. I mean, I think some of this, you know, you, different classes, so that, you know, that's part of it, so, you know, you have to measure it over a course of movement just one year. We're doing some incentive things, which I think have been helpful, and we do celebrate once a month with those kids, we do a celebration, and then we have a end-of-the-year drawing for some stuff. So, I think that will, we'll see how that goes, and hopefully that will help us, and talk to, talk to Jason a little bit about some of the things that they do, maybe us doing some similar things next year, some different things to encourage it. So, you know, it's hard to say 100%, but, I mean, we're doing something, and it's going up, so we'll try it again next year and see.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Rurkman.
Good evening. A couple shout-outs, I want to give a big thank you to Mrs. Babolka, Mrs. O'Boyle and the junior class. Our prom was awesome, the venue was awesome. Walnut Creek, Walnut Grove, Walnut?
Walnut Grove.
Walnut Grove, just south of Laith Grove. Did an excellent job, it was Barbie themed, so, great job with the decorations, and we had a ton of kids show up for that. So, a big thank you to those folks for organizing that and decorating. Another big thank you to our maintenance department, Dr. Lanigan, Coach Wink. Sunset graduation was, I thought, went phenomenal. They, we spent the whole morning setting up, so a big kudos to those guys for taking half their day and, and for setting that up and for making that evening special for our kids. Shout-out to our kids for, for finishing up EOC testing. Teachers were looking forward to getting those, those results back. Teachers put a lot of effort into that this year and educating our kids, and so, we're looking to see the growth from that. Kids did a great job, and we rewarded them yesterday for an attendance incentive, we did Kona Ice for anyone that was 90% or better for the semester, so treated them to some Kona Ice yesterday morning, so. And gearing up for tomorrow, last day of school.
It was, it was fun.
It was a good day for it.
Yeah, it was fun to send off the graduates that evening, that couldn't, like, if you were going to script an evening for an outdoor graduation, that was the evening.
Perfect weather.
Yeah. Well, and I would say, as a parent of a graduate, I think that entire week was just lovely.
It was busy, but it was, it was worth it.
To all of your staff and certain teachers, it was just well-done, thank you. We wish every graduate the best success.
Absolutely, looking forward to their success.
Any movement in the gym yet? You knew about there being some bleachers?
Bleachers, they're coming, they'll be in tomorrow, 12:30. They're waiting for kids to get out because they couldn't move bleachers with like passing perimitting things, so they were going to constantly stoping, so 12:30 tomorrow, they're starting. So, the gym is, it'll look a little different next year.
Gym makeover.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, please.
We have the high school activities list, the maintenance and technology, any questionings or comments on any of those?
Impressive.
Impressive.
Congrats to all the kids, just stayed amazing.
And along with their attendance, I think that's a pretty exciting thing to see, that they, they thrive on the field and, and the activities they do, and they also. Yes. Yeah, yeah, we have some success in both areas. A lot of effort and time into both those. Next, what we want to, is Dr. Utech.
Good evening. Can't believe this may already. Time flies when you're having fun, right? I wanted to quickly talk a little bit about the celebration I shared. Obviously, we know that continuing education is super important in the field of education, but it is extremely important when we have state statutes and we see reading initiatives that are so strongly supported with research and whatnot and, and other models that have really shown us that great care comes with the rewards that we have reaped a little bit this year. But I wanted to just give a, a complete shout-out to all of the teachers. We had 24 this year, we're going to have 32 next year, going through and completing the two volumes of Letters Training. Each of those volumes takes outside 48 to 60 hours, so it's like a, it's a, it's a college course. And that was given to us, granted to us by the state of Missouri, and all elementary teachers have the ability to go through that training, first come, first served, and we had that many get in and get ready to go through. So, really excited about that, and I think that really just goes right into how the information I reported. I did report the K-2 STAR, I'm sorry, the, the growth and achievement for both the Missouri Assessment Plan, but it's more of the NWEA that supports that. So, the NWEA scores are recorded at this point in time of the year because it's, they're so many of the assessment. So, along with the STAR, which I'll get into, they take this in the areas of math and ELA. So, I reported last month the CIS and CDMS, so if you want to go back to kind of look at those reports, that this is specifically our kindergarten, first and second grade kiddos, and just a reminder, I like to show growth and achievement, so the top row is growth for each of the grade levels, and then the bottom row is achievement, and it's achievement from fall to spring. So, as you can see, we're holding pretty steady with some high achievement, but also high growth, and that's what we want to see. And not only is that evident in this report, as Dr. Ormsby, Ormsby showed you, shared with you, that's evident in our STAR report. So, that's called multiple measures. So, that tells you we're doing something that's hitting the needle and moving the needle in both of the assessments. So, then the next chart is obviously for ELA, so in that area, I think I began the year with saying we have stronger scores in the area of math and having more opportunities for growth in ELA. And obviously, we've shown that we've moved students, especially at our primary levels, with those teachers who have gone through the training. Also, at CDMS, I did want to share, we had a teacher complete the Letters Training, and we're sending at one to two, maybe possibly three more, still, still kind of in the, in the works. So, we are moving that learning all the way through as the students graduate through the system. And also, the next report, I believe, is that district benchmark report that goes along with the STAR. So, that is the Early Literacy Assessment and also the Reading, Renaissance Reading Assessment. So, at this point, kindergarten and first grade, we don't have longitudinal data to go through and show cohorts. So, what I did is show second grade, third grade, three years of data, fourth grade, all the years of data, and fifth grade, all their years of data, and what I am so happy and very, very excited about is each one of the grade levels, every single one of the grade levels did a lot better than the previous year. So, we're showing that the same group of students are continuing to retain and grow and move, and that's what we want to see. So, growing the green, growing the blue, that's, that's what our, our job is. The next part that I was super excited, because I didn't even know that this proficiency chart existed, I think it might be new, but I don't typically single out schools in, in reports, but I thought that, hey, it's okay, we're doing pretty okay. When I look at this, basically, if you go from the continuum from the left bottom to the top right, you are going from low achievement, low growth, to high achievement, higher growth. So, when we see the typical growth, that's where we want to be. If we're past that, that dotted line, then we're, we're achieving even more growth than expected. If we're past the 50% line and up, we're extremely high in our achievement. So, as you can see, typical growth and high achievement for our three schools, and then the early literacy, the reason it's two different charts is because the, the first chart is the STAR literacy test, the second one is STAR Early Literacy. So, this shows our first grade and kindergarten. So, when it says Parkview there, it talks about high growth, high achievement, that is for our kindergarten and first grade students only, so. But I want to give you both, both pictures. Our enrollment is slightly up, we just kind of teeter back and forth. We are working with Officer Palmer and the assistant principals on our emergency management team, and we're planning drills and then our wrapped reunification training. I kind of shared a lot about the Missouri reading exceed in the data. One of the things that Mrs. Rucker actually talked about is Mr. Stickel and some of his staff members, and then Mrs. Rucker and some of her staff members got together last week, and we talked about the interventions that it's going to take as our students move forward, what our reading success plans look like, how we can support, and then they also went into actually watch some of the intervention sessions. So, truly what the students are going to be doing when they come to the sixth grade. And then, I guess lastly, I wanted to kind of share that in, in looking at our CSIP, we're hitting a lot of our marks, but I wanted to do a comprehensive data dive, I guess, this summer, and make sure that prior to the beginning of the year, you get all of the data, instead of just in pieces. So, it's kind of a yearly review, and then we'll hold a stakeholder meeting after that. So, what questions do you have for me?
So, Dr. Utech, just to be clear, the, the NWEA is a predictive test for map success?
Yes.
And we can feel pretty comfortable that that has, over time, shown to be?
Yes and no. I mean, it, it is still one, one shot, you know, they took it on this day, and then they took it on this day. I love the, the way that you look at the growth model, but it's, it still is a, what do they call it, an autopsy assessment? So, we're hoping that those do correlate, they have in years, and some years they haven't. So, it kind of depends. Also, on the NWEA, the assessment in science is given very differently because it is less based on your ability to read. So, the science is more methodology and, you know, scientific method, but when you go into the map test, it is lots of reading, like, it is almost a literacy assessment in and of itself. So, that kind of skews it a little bit, so, taking that with a grain of salt, but yes.
Is there ever any talk about going to the NWEA model versus the map one snapshot?
Yes. 20 school districts in the state of Missouri have actually received a waiver, so that way they are looking at that, and they're, they're using NWEA, they're using Curriculum Associates, it's called iReady. They're using different models of assessment to basically pilot and see if it does show student success and student readiness and that growth model, because right now, we're getting ready to look at our APR this summer that's going to come out. The state of Missouri has actually chosen to use our 2023 graduate data and not our 2024 graduate data, again, for the CCR assessments. So, we, the good news is, is we get to clean up that data. The different news is that it's not really the students who graduated this school year that we're going to look at, and it's all based on timing. I get the reason why, but sometimes when we look at measures and methods and things like that, it doesn't always show us exactly what's happening at that point in time, which is the goal, right? Because if we want to move people forward, we have to know where they're at, not six months ago, because sometimes, I think, I believe, I shared, we got our map, map results five, six months after the test was given. So, yes, the correlation should be high, and yes, there are other states and competency based models and things like that that our state is moving towards. It's not completed by any means, but at least there's some conversations about it happening.
If the board can ever help advocate for that, because I think that's a more fair assessment to our students, then one day, you sit down and take this test, and that's what, you know, I think that's not a real true picture, I know.
And looking.
Probably today would not be my day to be assessed, just saying. So, yeah, I mean, you know, that, I feel for our kids when they have to sit down and take that day, and that's, and then the teachers feel that pressure too, as they can obviously see growth in these kids.
And we still will have some initiative assessment, but obviously, you know, do we want to catch them, or do you want them to leave with the skills that they need to be workforce-ready, or career?
Right.
Or, you know, military, or going off to college, whatever that might be, or technical. We want them to have that, and not just the, hey, we got you, we gave you an F, and, and see you bye, you know? So, absolutely, and that kind of segues into some things that we're already talking as a leadership team for next year. So, I won't get too deep into that because we're still making those plans, but competency based education is something that is coming really strong into the state of Missouri, so.
I would be interested in knowing more about that and how we can advocate for that, so.
I will make sure that our next conversation is a little bit about that.
Perfect.
And thank you for taking the time to, to those of us understand these a little bit better.
You know, it takes all of us to go through, like, what does that turn you into? So, no, it's not, it's not a problem anytime.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Utech? Thank you. No, it's proper.
Good evening. Just a few things. Number one, talking about all of the map testing, EOC, I do want to give a shout-out to our teachers, both Sped and Regular Run. When we do special education and testing for map and EOCs, we do most of our students' small group or individual testing, so that really throws off the schedule for about three weeks, so, so kudos to the teachers for handling a chaotic schedule for a couple of weeks. It is very tedious work, and the kiddos, like you said, having to test on a certain day and show all of their growth is hard, so shout-out to the teachers for doing that. Takes a lot of scheduling as well, so. Second thing that I want to point out is that currently, so we're still evaluating, we still have about 15 students that we're going to finish up this school year, but as today, as of May 15th, the special ed department has evaluated 178 students this year, so, and that includes gifted, all the way down to special education. So, we have a whole gamut of what we are testing, so we are at 178, and that is, big kudos to Ashley Conover and Adam Nelson, and then our speech-language department, because they do the majority of the testing, so. It's a lot of kiddos to get through in a year's time, so. And then, last but not least, if you saw our Facebook page, I posted it on there, but Andy Brown is ETS pre-ETS program, and that is a program that gets students with disabilities training and services so that they can be trained for post-secondary life. That could be like a training, an employment, military, could be a variety of things. So, we started this school year with eight students that were enrolled with pre-ETS, so parents have to get signed up. Some of you guys have high schoolers, you know, getting notes home and actually getting a signature and getting them back to school can be a difficult process, and so, Andy worked really, really hard on getting students, all of our students that needed services. needed services, getting their parents contacted, and we are now up to 29 students. So that is a huge job, just in one school year, with Andy taking over that program. So Joey is our area director for pre-ETS. He nominated her for our regional teacher of the year, and she won. So for the whole Northwest region, Andy Brown won that. So you guys have heard at most of our board meetings, us talking about how we're getting students ready and working at Cameron Market, taking them out to the community, trying to prepare them. Joey helps with that as well. So he sits down with somebody outside of the school, he comes in once a month and meets with students, talks about scholarships, talks about transportation, talks about what it really takes. So we're preaching that, and then you have an outside agency through Mizzou that works with them as well. So kudos to Andy for all of her hard work this year. So we got to surprise her, Dr. Utech and Dr. Robinson got to help present that on Friday. So we were pretty excited, and we posted some pictures. We didn't post the really good ones of Andy's surprise face. Those of you that know Andy, know she has quite the facial expressions and the animation, and we got some pretty good pictures of her, so I'll show you later. That's all I'm going to share. I know some of the other stuff, contracts, most of whom are mine, so if you guys have questions on them, I'm here to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys have questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for all those reports. Well, we have reached the portion of our meeting where residents of the district have requested to address the board about the governance of Operation of District, may be placed on the agenda in accordance with our policy and Missouri State statute this evening. We have two individuals that have requested to speak to us. And first up would be Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Gilbert, introduce yourself for the record and state that your topic for the record, please. And if you're hitting out information, please make sure Ms. Walker gets a piece of this information, so that.
Yes, ma'am. May I have one more picture right now?
Please introduce yourself for the record.
I was looking to see how you listed on the agenda what my topic was. I am Heath Gilbert, and my topic is agendas. I am here to ask you to change the way these meetings are held, and that you have at least one reading of an item for consideration before you vote. The current system doesn't afford the public an opportunity to hear the board discuss, or board discussion until after the opportunity to address you is passed. The structure of the current meetings prohibits the community from having any meaningful opportunity to speak to an issue until after you voted. At the March meeting, you asked the community to provide input about those items for consideration before you discussed any of them. You required us to address you without first allowing us to hear the sales pitch from Ed Council and your own discussion. There were several things that came up after the public speaking portion ended that I would have liked the opportunity to point out. First, you have a picture. It is of the agenda from that meeting as it was originally posted. You will notice that the contract you approved wasn't on the agenda. It was added the day of the meeting. Adding an item to the agenda the day of the meeting is a bad idea. First, it's a violation of sunshine law. Second, adding an item at the last minute may not allow the community or the board members an opportunity to read and understand those last minute additions. Andy, you asked Ed Council about the options to renew the contract. Those details were provided in that three-page document. It was there. Did you not read it? I'm guessing not, because you had to ask. It was irresponsible to take a vote on that night, as it was clear that not every board member had their opportunity to read the contract, because you added it the day of the meeting. Considering what many of you do for a living, it is deeply concerning that you voted to sign a contract that you didn't read. During the board discussion, it was asked, excuse me, if there were any other companies besides the MSBA and Ed Council that provided policy services. Mr. Robinson knew no. Considering the fiduciary responsibility to spend our tax dollars wisely, how is that possible? Ed Council told us there was at least one more company which provided that service. Why wasn't the other company considered before you signed that five-year and $23,000 commitment? Maybe they offered a better service and a better price. How many of you would spend $23,000 of your own money so recklessly without shopping around or looking into the product you are about to purchase? Why did none of you ask to hear from the other company before voting? You did ask about my concerns with the contract requiring you to retain Ed Council as your lawyers in all legal matters. You were given several assurances verbally by Ed Council. I would have liked to point out that perhaps it would have been wise to have those assurances added to that contract before signing it. It's not in the contract. It didn't happen. Why didn't you ask? Pam, you have denied my allegations that this board serves Mr. Robinson and not the taxpayers. At the March meeting, I heard no discussion about the merits of the Ed Council product as compared to that of the MSBA. Scotty's not here, but Scotty, you weren't even here two years ago when the board supposedly discussed it. How did you decide to vote for that contract without hearing any details or comparisons? From where I stand, I see only two options. Either this body discussed that contract outside of the purview of the public, yet another sunshine law violation, or you decided to vote for the contract based solely on what Mr. Robinson wants, which is it? It is unethical to knowingly structure these public meetings in such a way as to deny the public from hearing what is being considered before giving us the opportunity to speak about it. This is the fourth time that I have brought this up. Do you serve the community, or do you serve the district? Thank you.
Next item on the, next individual whose request to speak is Mr. Landy.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Landy, please introduce yourself to the record, for the record.
Sure.
And please announce your topic as well.
Glad to be back. Sure. Dan Landy, I'm in the district, and I'm here to talk about the police department. Sure. Okay, folks, I'd like to talk about the police department tonight, and before I do, I'd like to start with a prayer, please. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Okay. Folks, I am not anti-police. As many of you know, I'm a retired policeman, so I'm not anti-police. However, and I do actually agree that police officers should be in school. I mean, they act as a deterrent, right? They are, you know, are ready for an immediate response, God forbid something bad should really happen, and they are mentors, I guess, would be a good word for it, to the kids, to build student relationships, and to help the kids understand that policemen are people too, and, you know, and it's a respectable career and so on and so forth, and just to kind of build up the bridge. However, after all that, I am not for school, for the school having its own police department, okay? And here's why, and this is no offense at all meant to the superintendent or the police department at all, the officers present. But Mr. Robinson is not a policeman, okay? He's an educator. He has, you know, no formal training in police work, but yet he's running a police department. What can go wrong? You know, I mean, you would never see this on the outside, any other police department, your chief, your sheriff, whoever's in charge, is a certified, bona fide policeman with experience, with education, and training. In this case, there's not. So in the event that one of the officers here has a question and needs some guidance about a police matter that happens here at school, where are they supposed to go, right? To the chief, right? To the boss, which is Dr. Robinson. Only, what kind of advice, what kind of mentorship can he provide, because he's not a policeman? You see, there's, and, you know, it seems to me that there's also a legal liability there too. So that's one reason I don't believe that schools should have its own police department. A second reason is for parent conflicts of interest. Okay, hypothetically, let's just pretend there's a crime committed on school property, okay? And, you know, let's say that some parents decided that there was inappropriate books in the school, and they went to the school district police department, made a report, the officer, you know, knowing that, you know, made a report, and, you know, but, you know, are the citizens, or the victims, or the, you know, the people that bring these concerns, how are we, how are the people assured that the officer is going to do a thorough, honest investigation of his boss, of the school department, police department? See, I mean, you're asking an officer to investigate his boss, because you all signed his paycheck. So, I mean, you know, and I'm not calling anybody here criminals, but if there's a crime committed, somebody committed it, and so you have to find out who did it as a policeman, right? That's the job. So, you know, we, it just, not saying that these guys can't be objective, but why would you put them in that kind of position in the first place? To ask them to investigate their bosses? I mean, nobody, nowhere on the outside in the police world would ever do this. And so I don't know why we're doing it here. And if you think that this is a hypothetical situation, it's not. I made that police report that I'm referring to in March of '22, right? I found some pictures and some dirty books, I brought it to Officer Palmer's attention, he wrote the report, but he immediately knew that he shouldn't, in his, this is about the police department.
Well, if we're going to talk about a personnel issue, we need to do that in closed session. So if we're going to specifically talk about a certain individual and their job performance, we need to do that in closed session.
Okay, okay, fair enough. But the point is, should he have done that? No, he shouldn't have. He should have gone to Cameron PD, he should have gone to the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Landy, I specifically ask you not to speak about his job performance, so if you can just move forward.
Okay, I got you. I'm sorry. Okay, so since my time's almost up, my point is, why are we allowing the fox to guard the hen house? And again, not being derogatory, and not calling anybody names, but, you know, why are we, why are we doing this? There's a smarter way, there's a better way, there's, I think, a more legal way, and especially if the school district wants to foster community relations, you know, trust, transparency, and all that. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our time where patrons, teachers, and students are allowed to come up and speak to the board about items for consideration that have been noticed on the agenda. This time, we give parents, teachers, students, anybody that wants to, three minutes to address one of those topics, and you can find those under items for consideration in number 12 on the agenda. Please introduce yourself for the record and confirm that you're a resident of the district, and talk about which item you would like to sign.
I'm going to talk about all of them.
You're going to talk about all of them?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Heath, and yes, I'm a resident. There's a lot of contracts there. There's a lot of documents there. At the March meeting, you didn't read them. How many of you read all of those documents before you come in here tonight to vote on whether or not it's real? And if you didn't read all of the documents, I would ask that somebody make a motion to postpone the vote until you have the opportunity to read those documents. You didn't read them in March, and there was one that was three pages long. How many pages are there? There were a lot. I tried to read all of those things, and I couldn't get through them all, even with the weekend. There's a lot there. Did you read all of those documents? And if you did not, the right thing to do is to hold up on the vote. Any of you want to admit you didn't read it all?
Anyone else would like to address the board?
My time's not quite up yet.
I'm sorry, you stepped away from the podium.
All right, if you'd please have a grab of my camera. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board about one of the items for consideration? Seeing none, we'll move on to items for consideration. So the first item for consideration is an endorsement letter for the Warrensburg board member Gary Grisby for the president-elect's position at MSBA. Ms. Clark, would you use some background, please?
Yes. Mr. Grisby reached out to me. We have known each other professionally. He is a former educator and announced at Carrollton Band Day for like 45 years, so he's been involved in education, is a very winning personality, and serves on the Warrensburg School Board. I visited with a couple people in that community who speak very highly of him as a board member. And he reached out, the incoming MSBA president did not win reelection, and so that position is open, and he is charged, if he would like to run for that position, with getting letters of endorsement from boards of education at various districts. And so I am recommending that we support his candidacy. Often, the MSBA presidents are people we don't have any connection to or know well, and while I can't say I know Gary super well, I know of him, and I've worked with him, and I feel strongly that he would be a great candidate for president. So I'm recommending that we draft an endorsement letter for his candidacy for the president of MSBA.
I would like to add too, that I was able to watch his interview by MSBA, and he's a former Marine, and long before he became a school board member in Warrensburg, he was a huge supporter of the arts, veterans, and education. There are several goals that he has that I think are worthy goals, and in terms of public education, so I agree with your assessment of that, and hope the board will support him.
Ian, are you making that informal?
I do make a motion that we draft a letter of endorsement for Mr. Grisby.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Peck? Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, sign. Seeing none, motion passed, we can hand this in. I will get with Kelly, we'll get that drafted, and I will, we'll sign it, I'll sign it as representing the entire board, so.
And that will go to him?
That will go to him, yes. Yeah. Next on the agenda is the extension of the buses.
Yeah, in the board pack, you'll find a transportation agreement to extend our lease with Durham School Services. They've been with our district for quite a few years. I think they've been pretty loyal to our district, and we've done a pretty good job of having a working relationship with them. This will continue our lease agreement with them for five more years. It does come with a fairly, I think, hefty price, unfortunately, the first year, but then I think it levels off. I think we're still getting a better deal than what I've heard from other people that have had to switch services. So I am recommending that we'll continue our contract with Durham School Services and extend that for another five years and move forward with that.
Go ahead. Dr. Robinson, do you foresee a time that we would ever take back our buses and not contract that out?
It's a pretty good expense, because we probably have about three buses that we lease, because we run around 25, 26 routes, plus we keep other buses for activities, so that's, and when you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars for a school bus, that's a major expense to start off with. Then you have to have a facility, which I would love to have a facility, just to even do with our own buses, but right now, we only have one bus barn, so we really can't, we only have one bus area, I should say, to go fix a bus, but it's a, it's a pretty big expense. And then you've now added all those employees back on your payroll, which we're paying for it, but that's just an extra expense. You've added back onto your payroll, now you've added health insurance, benefits, now you have to find all those employees.
Right.
I don't, I don't, I probably wouldn't recommend it, just because right now, there's such an expense to that. I mean, you're going to spend quarter of a million dollars on a bus, and...
I mean, you're going to spend quarter of a million dollars on a bus, and, uh, just, just for one. Plus, you don't have a facility, and you got to hire a mechanic, and you got to hire all your drivers, and then...
So, there's a reason we went to this model.
There is, and I know that when I, when I came to Cameron years ago, they were already contracted. You know, I've worked in districts that own their own, I've worked in districts that contract out. So, um, there is perks to both sides. But at this point in time, trying to switch back would be a lot of money.
I know bus companies are looking for drivers everywhere, all the time.
Yes.
Durham has a pretty good record with their employees?
Um, it's been better this year. Uh, it's been better this year. We haven't had to have as many bus, you know, double routings or such, um, this year. But, uh, we, we've had it, uh, now, we pretty much have been part of our contract that if our staff have to stick around after school and watch kids, that we take that back off their bill, because we, we're paying staff to help out after school to watch kids. When we do that, we take that back off the bill. You know, not everybody's going to agree to that. Durham was, was very agreeable to that. It, it's been better, but we still have a lot of help. We could use, you know, and this is my plug, for, for parents that are out there with kiddos and sports activities, uh, you want a great way to go watch your kids play basketball, go play volleyball, go play football, drive a bus. It's a lot different than driving a bus after school with kiddos that just want to get home. And, uh, you get to watch your kid, and you get paid for it. And we could, we could really use some help, because, uh, that puts, that does put a string on us with the activities. We're usually, for the most part, we're ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent after school, but some of our activities, we have to do a lot of double routing, and it might be dropping off the tennis team at St. Joe, and then taking the baseball team up to Maryville, or the soccer team, or whoever, and we're, or we have to, we had to have some parents help out for some activities this spring, so, um, it's, it's not a bad gig, and, uh, but, uh, that's where we probably run into more problems, is we, we have a lot of activities, especially in the spring. And you start throwing all the state competitions, and then all the sports, and then all the activities, uh, it's, it's a lot. And when we're taking two buses for every middle school, and two buses for every track, and high school, and then you got, you know, two buses with track, getting to maybe band kids, or it's, uh, music, or whoever it is, it's, it's a lot, so. And then we try to throw field trips, which we've pretty much, have put the Knicks on field trips until, like, May, because we, we can't, we can't afford to have any more buses out in April than in March.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Robinson, are you the, um, point person for Durham?
I, I usually am, yes. I work with their, their general manager for the area, yes.
And you say we have five, six buses?
How many?
What, what did you say?
I said about twenty-five, twenty-six, is what we run, from daily in routes. And then we have about thirty buses at our disposal.
Okay.
That we keep.
Do you, do they provide you with a proof of maintenance? It says that regular preventative maintenance shall be practiced on all buses, but do they provide you with that?
We, we, we do have proof of that, because they have to get inspected every year, so we get the inspection report from the Highway Patrol, we also get theirs. Our local person also keeps me informed if we're having issues with buses, or where we're at, or, you know, if we're having to borrow a bus. I mean, sometimes occasionally you might see a bus that says Lawson, or Savannah, or something like that, because we've had to borrow a bus. They're, they're, they are very good about keeping me abreast of any information with them, so.
And then I saw that there was a separate line item for charge for cameras. Do we get proof that those cameras are actually working functionally in each bus?
We, we try to watch those as much as possible. Occasionally, we don't always know when they don't work until we've had an incident. We don't always check those every day, but we do. We, we have gotten better about trying to make sure that we check those, um, on a regular basis to make sure those are working, um, because we have had issues where unfortunately those didn't work, and we've had something happen.
Do I have a motion to accept the bus contract as presented? So moved. Motion by Ms. Goodwin-Clark, second. Second by Ms. Lockridge. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on, next to the therapy at school twenty-two, twenty-four contract. You all have been presented these.
And this is for specifically application of physical therapy services. It's a company that we've used, um, or, it's in a new company, this is a new company. We use services. And they do very good work.
We approve the therapy at school twenty-two, twenty-four contract. Ms. Peck made a motion to approve the therapy at school twenty-two, twenty-four contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goodwin-Clark. Do I have any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
And the next one is for a contract for visually impaired. Specifically, this gentleman works a lot on orientation mobility with our students who have, uh, are visually impaired, and so comes in, contracts that, so, we've used his services for quite a few years as well, so.
How many of those students have we had in recent years?
Uh, that's probably a better question for Ms. Crawford, I'm sorry.
We currently have seven students in the district that have some sort of visual impairment. So, he does orientation and mobility, so teaches them how to, like, crossing roads safely, orientating through buildings, using their hands for, for safety. That's the biggest thing that Ms. Pepper does.
Thank you. I have a motion to, um, for Doug Pepperidge, contract with orientation and mobility services? So moved. Moved by Ms. Peck.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lockridge. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Ms. Walker, on each one of those, we're going to want to note that Mr. Grunier was not present this evening, so, thank you. Um, next on the item is the Kansas State School for the Blind Extended Year Contract.
Recently, we've had a student that's been accepted into the Kansas School for the Blind, and so this will allow us to start services this summer for that student, so. And Ms. Crawford, stop me if I'm saying something that's not correct, so.
Motion to approve. Motion approved by Ms. Goodwin-Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Early. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. The next one, um, this is the, for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
This will be for the later school year, so.
Motion to approve. Motion approved by Ms. Lockridge. Second by Ms. Peck. Any discussion on, on the yearly contract for next year? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to Summit Behavioral Consultation. They have new services for twenty-two, twenty-four contract. That's why I don't want to be evaluated on today. Go ahead on this one.
Well, this is just for Summit Behavioral to be able to come in and do evaluations, do different pieces. When we have students that, uh, may, we, we might have some ones that have extra eyes on. And so when we're armed services, we need to have somebody else to look at them, then we, we call in some behavioral services.
To come in and assess.
To come in and assess and do an extra evaluation, or...
An impaired need to sign off on that evaluation by this?
Yes. Probably six, seven years, maybe.
I've been here, I've used them. Maybe I've used them before, I was here as well. They're one of the only few, um, few home schools in the area, and so they do contracting with students, but they also will come out to the school to shirt to help, so that way students can stay in school to shirt, as well.
Does a student have to have an IUP for these, for this evaluation? You can't just bring them in for a student that doesn't have an IUP?
Um, so if we're doing an evaluation, we're either, they already have services, or we're looking to see if they need required services. And if we're going to bring in a company like this, then there's usually some significant behavioral that we're trying to find the function of why behavior is occurring, um, through a lot of documented data, where somebody just sent some watches, um, while the teacher is working with the student for the parent to do their job, or ask for something that's not actually working with the kid that does that.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Ms. Lockridge, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goodwin-Clark, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, um, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Now we'll go through H, I, and J. These are individual contracts for individual students.
Yes.
With Summit Achievement Center.
Yes.
Motion to approve H, I, and J. Motion approve H, I, and J for each individual student. From Ms. Lockridge, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Early. Is there any discussion on Summit Achievement Center contract? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. And our final is the Cameron Hands to Learn twenty-four, twenty-five agreement.
This is an additional one for visually impaired.
This is more for the teaching rail, um, teaching habits like read and write, and do academic work through railing or larger print. It's different than the orientation mobility.
Motion, I'm sorry, motion to approve. Motion approved by Ms. Goodwin-Clark. Do I have a second? Second by, uh, Mr. Murphy. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. I'm glad we were able to go ahead and get those contracts situated for next year, and get the things aligned for those students, so. Uh, we've moved to the portion of the meeting for board member comments this evening, and we're going to start with Ms. Peck. Joe, over here, Mr. Murphy.
Um, I will say that I went to, as a representative for my company, to Park for Your Career Day two weeks ago, and I thought that that was just a neat experience, that, you know, to show all the children trades that are out there in the world. And I mean, they, they had a blast just seeing different, you know, we took our big work trucks out there, and numerous different companies in the community did the same thing. I had a lot of smiles. We were the ones before the, the cone of ice, or maybe that's why, but... I think that there was a lot of fun that day. So, I think it's neat to show kids what, you know, you're in school to build towards something. So, I think if we're showing that at different steps along the way, it really grows everybody, so. Kudos to everybody that was involved in that.
Ms. Early?
I just want to thank all of our teachers, staff, administrators, for, um, what I believe was a very successful year, and to thank all the, um, teachers and staff that are going to do summer school. We have great numbers for summer school, so I'm glad that we are able to provide that service in this year with free breakfast and lunch, so I'm very proud of that, and just very thankful, grateful for this uneasy district.
Um, I would just certainly echo that, and, um, we are kind of, um, and we have heard reports of there being difficulties in, in hiring teachers, and certainly, uh, teachers are under a lot of stress and duress, and, uh, right now, and I just appreciate our teachers, and I know that, to the tune of smelling like white fish for a day, uh, the least we could do, the least, the least we could do is bring you some fried fish. But please understand that it is a, a token of enormous appreciation for hours of dedication to our students, and, and I'm grateful that the data is supporting successful hard work, so thank you.
I would just like to shout out to all the teachers that have been putting extra hours in to make those test scores and those numbers improve, because I think you are seeing the, the benefits, and it's, it's wonderful, and I know it's going to continue, so, great job. Shout out to, and, and just to echo, um, Ms. Goodwin-Clark's comments earlier, but the, the last week of school for the seniors is a very special week. Um, having now gone through it with the senior, um, they roll out the red carpet, they do a lot of really cool stuff, and it involves all the buildings. Um, the grad walk is amazing. It's so cool to see all the little kids get so excited, and they're giving high fives, and they're jumping together, cheering, and if we can get one kid who might think at some point that I don't want to do school anymore, to think at that point, I'm going to, I'm going to do that someday, that is so worth it, and I think it's wonderful. And they're just, the award ceremonies and the graduation, just, it's such a wonderful week, and I just really appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. And then the end of the year efforts for the teachers that stay with the kids after the seniors are gone, just bless you. And, um, making those, that time still productive, and then having those award ceremonies as well, because all those kids do some really great stuff, too. So, um, it was a great school year, and I appreciate all the, all the good work that's gone in in summer school, and just have a great time.
I just want to say thanks for all the dedication and work this year. I think we've got momentum going, um, and I hope we can continue that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I think we, I think we can see a push, we can see improvement, and, and I just, I feel like we've got the ball rolling in that direction, and, and hope that we can continue that, that push. Teachers and students are working hard, so I appreciate that a lot. Um, I want to welcome Officer Ward to our meeting this evening.
Thank you for attending this evening, along with Officer Palmer.
I want to, uh, let the board know I will be attending the Summer Summit down in Branson. If anybody is interested in going with me, um, get ahold of Kelly and myself, and we can get, um, there's still time, I think, for, to get somebody registered if they're interested in going to Summer Summit. I'll be doing that. I, uh, I do want to let the community know, when you are a board member, you do do a lot of reading. So, um, if you sign up for this side of the table, you're going to be reading a lot, so. Um, I do appreciate that the board delegates a lot of its authority to Dr. Robinson to bring us his recommendations, and after we've read that, we can all reach out to him individually before we get in here if we have any questions. I think some of you do that, so, uh, continue to do that. And, uh, I say have a great summer, and, uh, here's to a fun summer. Be safe out there this evening. I hope the storms have, have rolled on through, and, uh, I, our neighbors to the north are suffering tonight. There was a pretty nasty tornado in southern Iowa today. So, I'll be thinking of them as, as you go home, but be safe and have a great summer. We'll be back here in June, so if you want to come join us, you're always welcome, so, thank you. With that, I adjourn the meeting.